I would like to move item G5, the proposed direction to superintendent to develop a plan to address Islamophobia and Muslim student safety and bullying.
Okay, and we have speakers.
I'm a secondor.
And it's been seconded by Whitehurst Payne. Speakers who have submitted requests, there are 11 of them.
Yeah, fifteen total.
We now have a total of fifteen, so we do two minutes.
Yeah.
They're all supporting, so we have...
So you want to do one minute each?
One minute.
Okay.
Thank you. So we have fifteen speakers, they're all supporting, so it'll be one minute each. We're ready for that. You ready for that?
President McQuarrie, under the board rules, parameters of allowing the group a maximum of ten minutes, I believe that the group had worked over the weekend to coordinate a total amount of time. And so instead of one minute each, I would hope that you would allow them a block of time to distribute as they see fit for their designated speakers.
Yeah, I'm open to that. Do you have a suggested amount of time?
Ten to fifteen minutes.
Okay, total time fifteen minutes?
Thank you.
To be allocated as you see fit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right. First and foremost, I want to thank each and every one of you. Very soon you will receive a packet that contains a lot of information, including a summary sheet that has essentially two bullying reports that focus on the Muslim students, an educator's guide to the Islamic religious practices, Know Your Rights as a Muslim Youth Pocket Guide essentially, and then some other information, including a newsletter about our organization as well as contacts. So make sure that you take advantage and call us anytime you wish. So now I'll start, and I want to thank first and foremost each and every one of you. Mr. President, Honorable Board, Superintendent Cindy Martin, thank you very much. You guys are essentially the reason why this district is one of the best in California and perhaps the nation. So thank you very much. I have been...
Thank you.
It is my pleasure, and I'm going to ask, there's over 225 members of our community that are here, and I'm going to ask you guys to hold your applause so we can save time. Thank you very much, okay? So I want to first and also recognize that we have had a relation with the district's office of race and human relation and advocacy for over five years now. And I want to thank Ajin Shahid that was here, I'm not sure if he's still here. Thank you very much. If you ask them or ask our staff, they would tell you this relation for over five years has been wonderful. However, there are problems, and the problems are the following. Fifty-five percent of the Muslim community, Muslim students, reported that they were bullied. One out of five students experienced bullying because of school staff members. Twenty-seven of percent of the girls wearing a headscarf reported that teachers or administrators were the ones that discriminated. And there are a lot more information and statistics in those reports that we provided to you guys. So we have done a survey, and you will see that there's two different surveys, and I can later on go further on the numbers, but I want to save time and move on. The problem unfortunately is very significant. One of the students in their own words said the following: "They would say I was a terrorist, and they would always ask me, 'How is the bomb that you're working on?'" This is a student that's trying to learn. So this is what the problem is. Now, what have we done? Our organization has worked with many school districts to address anti-Muslim hate and Islamophobia. And what we would like to do now is take our relationship with the school district here to a next level and take that proactive measure and do something about it. So we do have a plan, a strategy if you will, and it's not that difficult really. A, knowledge is power. We must provide the right resources to teachers. When I go and do these trainings, teachers always ask me, "How come we didn't know these facts existed?" Right? So for me to have the report in my office, it's not going to help me. We need to get it to the hands of the teachers. We need to give them the right resources. Number two, I want to make sure that we have professional developments, and I don't want to scare us because there's so many professional developments that we have to do, whether it is state required or federal or otherwise. So the professional development that I'm talking about doesn't have to be a full day. It could be just an hour or two. We can work together to come up with something where the teachers know how to deal with this devastating problem. Number three, the curriculum needs to be inclusive. The curriculum needs to have something that may be positive contributions of the American Muslim community, right here in state, California, or nationally or otherwise. Addressing the bullying essentially reporting, we talked about reporting. Many of our community members have a problem going, finding, "Where do I report? How do I report?" They contact us. What if we had all our school websites had a banner that said, "Hey, report school bullying", right? Right on a prominent space. Now, this is not something new. I know the district is, you know, looking at all these options, so how can we help to make that happen? And then including Muslims and bullying discourse. And I want to thank the district. For example, they have posters that have Muslim students in it. Well, let's continue to do that, and let's continue to add them to announcements and any other bullying discourse. And then number six, there's a lot of refugees that are coming, and they have a lot of different problems that we need to, that they face, including bullying and many other, and that we can work together to address those. Solution, what is the solution? The solution essentially is there's a lot of concepts and people that we can work with right with the school district. We don't have to go far, right? So if we look, for example, Principal Godwin Hager, right, from Cherokee Point Elementary School, we can look into restorative justice, for those of you who guys know, most of you guys know about it, but that's a concept we can work on. We can work with essentially many other organizations like ADL and many other great organizations that are already working with the district. How can we leverage that in order to do that? What about compassionate comprehension and common core? Can we use that and essentially, you know, get the stories involving experiences of the Muslim community to do that? So I'm going to stop here because there's very little time and a lot to say, but I want to tell you the following: We're very flexible. I've done my research, and I know Cindy is one of the best. Thank you for all the work that you have done for us.
Thank you, sir.
I want to tell you, I want to tell you that we are very flexible in working with you to come up with ways to make this practical, okay? Now, I'll leave you with this, and this is my closing statement to you. When I was in school, I was bullied. When I was in school, I was bullied. But you know, I was fortunate because my teachers, the administration was my, they were my heroes. I still remember Mrs. Austin, my fourth grade teacher. I still go and visit her. She was protecting me. But when I have one out of five of our students that say that they can, you know, the discrimination is coming from the teachers and administration, I know that together we can work to make that go away. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dusmea Hamad. I am 10 years old. I'm going to fifth grade, and today I would like to share my story with you. It all started one day in school when my mom dropped me off. A girl in my class noticed that she was wearing a scarf. She looked at my mom in a very nasty way and asked me, "Why is your mom wearing that scarf?" This girl would repeatedly look at my mom, and I did a very nasty way, and asked questions about my mom and her dressing until one day during holiday celebration, the same girl was wearing high heels, and she stepped on my hand purposely, and she took her time on it, and I had to scream to have her remove her foot. It was very painful, and I could not stop crying. I was crying because my hand was really hurt, purple, red around it, and I was not able to move it. My mom immediately took me to the ER, and I had to wear a brace for a couple of weeks. On our way to the hospital, I was thinking, "Why would that happen just because my mom looks different than my classmates' mom? Please help us stop this kind of bullying so no one gets hurt." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Sohaila Jibali. I'm going to sixth grade. I love school and science. When I was in fifth grade attending Clay Elementary, I was bullied by a group of three boys, who started by calling me names. When the teacher didn't react to the name-calling, they increased and threatened me. I didn't feel safe. I told my teacher I didn't feel safe. I also told her I want to be safe, but she didn't react to that. The boys started hitting me, punching me, kicking me. They also hurt my eyes. At another incident, the boys pushed me and caused my teeth to bleed. I love most of my teachers, and I always looked up to them to make me feel safe. However, in this class, the teacher was a problem for me. I felt like me and the other students were getting bullied because of our religion. We were the only two Muslims, and we were the only two to get bullied. Several times I felt depressed and thought of leaving everything behind and go to a place where no one is there.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Shirif. I am nine years old. I'm in fourth grade. I love math, basketball, swimming, and soccer. I would like to share with you my story. In class one, we were talking about different cultures. I shared that I'm a Muslim. A kid in my class told me that Trump is going to beat Muslims up, including you. He also said that Muslims are the worst people. After hearing his words, I was scared and started crying. I started crying because Muslims aren't my family, and I don't want anyone to hurt my family. I told my teacher many times, but she forgot about the problem and did not do anything about it. Please vote to keep our family safe so no other kid has to go through this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the board and attendees. Assalamualaikum. My name is Lakman Bakhari, and I'm a 16-year-old high school senior. I'm currently the ASB senior class president, PTA historian, and student representative to the school site council, as well as president of the Muslim Student Association at my school. Each and every one of these positions has made me grow as a person and leader by making me experience new challenges, problems, and people. But sometimes the people that I have to deal with are Islamophobic. I can't even begin to tell you how many times I felt inferior because I look foreign, had people exclude me, spread rumors about me because of my faith, or had my ideas trampled upon due to political correctness. Although I managed to work around these setbacks to help create a more diverse and inclusive district and environment at my school, these same setbacks limit and oppress Muslim students like anything. Many Muslim students go to school and fear what their peers think and if staff members would stand up for them. This distracts them from being able to simply learn. In my psychology class, we learned that students that are continuously oppressed like this develop external loci of control, meaning that they feel their life is controlled by external factors only. According to many published studies, external loci of control were positively correlated with depression and anxiety, which have debilitating effects on students' drive to learn and even live. Do we really want any child to be suffering through this every single day? The sad part of it all is that this has been a common narrative for Muslim students in SDUSD for a long time. They're scared of voicing their own concerns because they don't want to feel like a snitch, or they feel like their school's administration won't help them. My own mother in the eighties, who is in this room today, was harassed and bullied by students and ignored by San Diego Unified Staff Members because of her faith, and it breaks my heart to say that I see the same atrocities happening to Muslim students today. The best way to solve this problem is to create a more open, diverse, and inclusive district, where teachers and other staff members have the proper resources to deal with the individual needs of each student. I'm confident that if the school district works with our community to educate the nearly 14,000 SDUSD staff members, we'd be moving in the right direction to achieve more inclusivity, which is why I highly urge the members of the board to vote yes on the G5 initiative. Thank you so much.
Well stated.
Peace be with all of you. My name is Sheikh Mohammed Al Jibali. I'm a Muslim chaplain for the last 15 years, and I'm here in San Diego for the last six years. As a parent, I focus on the progress of my kids in the academic field. My kids were sent, and I send them to the school that is very close to our house, a public school. They spent one of the wonderful year, which is the year of 2014 and 2015, when they were protected by a wonderful principal called Ms. Vas, and also they were protected by the teachers, whom we have no sufferings from the kids at all. But the last year, 2015, 2016, we had a very night, a very awful night dream. We suffered a lot. We suffered a lot.
Yeah, please continue.
Yeah, we suffered a lot because my kids were bullied, and especially Sohaila, who just talked and discussed this. Imagine as a parent that you have every day the statement that "I do like to go to school", the school that is very close, and you walk to it, "We hate the school, we hate to learn, we want to get back to Egypt". This happened, and after one full year of suffering, and we found no protection from the principal, no protection from the teacher. Imagine as a parent that your son and your daughter got back to you while their eyes are swollen. And imagine that the daughter got back and telling that she was pulled from a specific and a private part of her body. This happened, and we discussed this with the teachers, with the principal, and we found no protection. I took my kids to the psychiatrist. She suffered a lot for a full year, and I have been forced to send my daughter to a charter school when she completed the year. So I'm here telling you, I reported to the district, I reported to the principal, I took the legal steps to protect my daughter, and this never gave her a protection. So I'm here talking on behalf of all the parents in the United States. Please protect our kids from any bullying and from anything that will make them stop learning. Thank you.
I want to thank you for being here. This would be the last speaker, and you have a minute. Your time is up.
You still have two. You can't?
No. Your time was allocated, and we need to move, it was absolutely an important issue, it is absolutely clear. We, I think we, so we really do, so we have, you're the last speaker.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent. My name is Lalia Alali, as you know me as a DELAC chair, but I am also a parent of three kids attending San Diego Unified School District, and I serve on the Board of CARE. Through this report, CARE provides an evidence how the fear and hatred of Islam and Muslim in larger society filters into the school environment. Ultimately, 55% of American Muslim students surveyed reported being subjected to some form of bullying based on their religious identity. This literally means that every Muslim family has at least one child who is bullied at school. I have been involved with San Diego Unified School District for more than 10 years, yet my own kids are bullied and experiencing a type of bullying, just because they are Muslim. Following the study or the survey, CARE California conducted the focus group. I was in charge of the CARE San Diego Focus Group. The stories shared by the middle and high school were heartbreaking. They would, these are some of the statements of our kids. They would call me a terrorist and towel head and throw rocks at me. A girl reported said, "When I wear my hijab in school, sometimes people ask me if I am related to Osama bin Laden." The consequences of that is that Muslim students may feel marginalized, disempowered, and begin to internalize negative stereotype. And moreover, the students who feel disconnected and marginalized from the school environment will lack confidence, suffer academically, and fail to fully invest in their future. As a parent, I hope that the Board of Education and the Superintendent continue their work to create a safe and inclusive environment for our kids. Please vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah. I want to thank the students and the parents for presenting. I know a number of you have written statements, but if you want to, if you'll please turn those in, they will be written into the record, and if you want to fill, if you have written statements, you want to give them to the clerk. So we're through. Now it's time for the board to...
I signed up as a speaker separately.
I know, but there's only, there's only so much time that we can give.
I only need two minutes, if you don't mind, just two minutes, please.
Unless a board member wants to give their time. I will give you my time and will not make comment.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
One minute.
My name is David Patterson. I'm a representative of San Diego Veterans for Peace with Ann Barron, who is also here. We, members of the Veterans for Peace, are appalled at the current state of bigotry, racism, and hatred expressed towards Muslims, the huge majority of whom are law-abiding and productive citizens and students in San Diego. Bigotry and racism violate all the values that we believe we were defending during our military service. The ideals contained in the Constitution, to the degree that they have been manifested in America, have been a beacon to much of the world because of the diversity, openness, and respect for people of all faiths that most Americans live by. It would be a great calamity if we let fear give rise to hatred. There are about 3 million Muslims in the U.S. and more than 1.6 billion worldwide. They have the same religious right to freedom, right to religious freedom, freedom from fear and human dignity as members of any other religion, particularly in a nation that touts itself as a beacon of hope and the land of the free. As citizens, we have a moral responsibility to act to protect and preserve these rights. Accordingly, Islamophobia must be confronted every time it rears its ugly head. There is no room for complacency on this matter.
Thank you.
Let's make it clear, hate speech is not free speech. Thank you.
I was pleased. Thank you so much for your comments. I was very pleased to give my time to you. I couldn't have said it better. Very, very, very thank you for being here. Do we have other comments and discussion from the board?
As the secondor on this, I'm really appalled to hear some of these examples. And the comment about bombing, we had Sarah Collins here earlier in the year, and I mean, that had nothing to do with her ethnicity, I mean, with her religion. So that's unconscionable and should not be occurring. I think somehow or another, we've got to get a handle on it in terms of what's going on in the schools and elsewhere related to this kind of pressure that they're bringing on the children, and it's just not right.
Thank you for seconding the motion. Other comments? Trustee Otis?
I just want to thank everyone who came to speak about this issue tonight, and particularly the children who spoke up about their experiences. I appreciate your courage to come forward and speak about this, and this is happening at a time when the national discourse has gone in a very negative direction, which has certainly affected all of us. We had a prominent, without getting political, a prominent national speaker who spoke last night about the influence of our leaders on our children and the example they are setting, particularly and specifically on the issue of bullying of people of various groups. So once again, thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Barrera?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank trustees Beiser and Whitehurst Payne for creating this forum tonight so that people could come forward and have this conversation. Very important to have this conversation. You know, as I was listening to the students speak, unfortunately, again, this is not new, and it's not new in our community. I think about when I was in junior high, which shows you how dated that is, we didn't call it middle school then, we called it junior high. During the hostage situation in Iran, we had students being bullied and physically assaulted because they were Muslim. And we look up the generation after that, and we hear the stories from the students here tonight, and we know that this happens every day in our schools and in our community. But what you're doing is, you as young people, when you spoke here tonight, you're not waiting for adults to make this situation better, you're actually leading us. The young people who spoke here tonight, you're right now making our society better and making our school system better by coming and showing your commitment to this community. As Dr. Evans, you know, mentioned, we've got a discourse going on right now with some people and some opportunistic politicians that continue to try to, you know, find any issue that they can to divide our community, and when they divide our community, they claim that their goal is to make America great again. Tonight, the students who spoke showed why our country already is great and why it's going to be greater and greater going forward, and it's because of you. So I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your leadership, and again, our partnership with the Muslim community, and I very much appreciate, you know, you coming forward and talking about how you can work with us and how we can be flexible and figure out how to do better by our students, and we look forward, and I know Superintendent Martin looks forward to working with you. So again, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for the leadership of trustees Beiser and Whitehurst Payne.
Just one more little comment. I don't like to generalize about groups, but we have a lot of people from different groups who come before this board to speak about controversial topics, things that they are concerned about, maybe that the district isn't doing the best job about, but I don't remember in my years on the school board of finding a more respectful and articulate audience talking about this issue, so thank you very much.
Trustee Beiser?
Thank you. I really want to say thank you to Hanif Mohebi with CARE for all of his time and effort and energy to try to conduct a lot of the survey and the information, the data, so that we can identify the opportunity and take action to improve it as much as we can. I also would like to say thank you to Lalia Alali, not only for your participation in our school district over the last 10 years, your leadership on the DELAC, and also for being a parent that really cares and coming here tonight. I'd also like to say thank you to Imam Taha for his leadership to try to make sure that all public schools are safe. Because the bullying reporting process that this board and Superintendent Martin and the staff have developed initially was to protect children from being bullied that were gay or lesbian LGBT students. But as I said when we took that item up last year, that bullying happens to children in lots of different elements. Children that are marginalized are bullied for a variety of reasons, and the level of Islamophobia and Muslim bullying going on in our schools is unacceptable. It will not be tolerated, and I look forward to hearing from Cindy Martin at a future board meeting, what kinds of plans or steps that we can take as a district additionally to try to help support all children and make sure that we're protecting our Muslim students.
to try to help support all children and make sure that we're protecting our Muslim students.
So the board motion is that the superintendent will be directed to bring back to the board a plan to address Islamophobia and reports of bullying of Muslim students. The plan should be brought back to the board at a future date to be determined.
I think that for clarity purposes, a future date is a little bit ambiguous, but I don't want to define it to be such a narrow timeframe that it would bind Superintendent Martin's ability to do a thorough job. And so what would be a reasonable timeframe, Superintendent Martin?
Trustees Beizer, given that this is our last meeting for this particular school year, we resume back in September, so I'd look at the fall timeframe, September, October.
Well, I think that that would even, I think that would not allow you to do a thorough job of partnering with community, visiting with parents and students to try to develop a comprehensive plan that would be effective. I don't want you to be rushed.
And I also would like to point out, Trustees Beizer, that we have regular LCAP updates, and the issues that we heard about tonight very much are aligned to one of our LCAP goals, and so we have a plan each month to bring back an LCAP report, so we can also look at when is the LCAP goal for around safe and inclusive environments. It might be the right place to time my report and our response with that update, and where staff is working on when the monthly reports will be, so we could time it with that.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, if it's, if it's October, November, the first week of December, what's important is that we get it right.
Mm-hmm.
That's what's the most important.
Thank you.
So that's why the motion allows you the opportunity to do the work that you need to, to put together an important, important and successful plan.
Thank you.
So the motion is presented, stays as presented. No more discussion. Cast your vote. And the vote is unanimous. I want to thank the presenters and the audience for the level of civility of the presentation, a very major issue with lots of serious emotions, and very, very, very important. So thank you for being here. Thank you for your contributions. Thank you for working together as a community.